It's so quiet in here. No protestors or anything today? No Agenda 21 folks today? Well, should we go ahead and kind of get started? All right, I want to welcome everybody to our workshop. Today, we're going to honor agendas of Drake University Law Student Presentations. I will say that last year, we had great presentations on the part of the law students and some very thoughtful ideas. And we look forward to your engagement again today, and I'm excited to see what you guys have prepared for us. And sorry I didn't make the presentation the other night. I was previously committed, but it was a... Thank you again for the invitation to come over. Alan.
Mayor, Council, Alan Kinley, Deputy City Manager. As you've already noted, Mayor, it was just about a year ago this time that Drake came here with Jonathan Rosenblum to make a presentation. And a year has gone by. I apologize for the timing of the schedule for this workshop. It's a relatively short window, a small window of time to choose from with Drake's student schedule and the council's schedule and some travel that was done earlier this week. So, we were able to fit it in at this time, and so thank you for your willingness to come down today. A few brief comments from Laura Graham that kind of will give you an idea of how we've progressed from a year ago and the involvement that the city has undertaken since that... since the last 12 months.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Laura Graham, City Manager's office. First of all, again, thank you for attending this afternoon's meeting. We're all very excited to see the Drake Law Students present again this year. Based on some feedback from staff last year and from the presentations from the students last year, Jonathan Rosenblum approached me early this semester wanting to see if the city would be interested in coordinating their efforts to see if there'd be an opportunity for them to work with staff on some of their proposals to see if there'd be some viability in their product at the end of the semester. So, I took the opportunity to sit down, meet with the students, and then also had the chance to have our sustainability team here with the city of Des Moines sit down and interact with the students on their presentations and their projects. And I think the end results are pretty exciting results. They've had the opportunity to take a look at a lot of the activities that are going around at a metropolitan level here with the Greater Des Moines Partnership, the Capital Crossroads Project, the Tomorrow Plan with the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and of course, all of the communities surrounding the Des Moines area. And then also the DART 2035 Project. So, very exciting things here, and I also would like to say Meg Fitz with the partnership has been very instrumental in bringing all of this together. So, without further ado, I'll introduce Jonathan Rosenblum with the Drake University Law School.
As Jonathan's coming up, I want to thank Laura for the efforts that she has had on behalf of the city representing us with our Star Communities Program. And the real basis for that, certainly knowing that there's different opportunities in Des Moines, Iowa than there might be in Los Angeles, or Albuquerque, or Miami, or some of the other places around not only this country but the world. But that STAR Program is sort of a national effort with 10 other communities to lay out sort of a beta test on what are the best things to do, how do we organize them, how do we exchange best practices and policies and ideas? And I think that as we move forward, it'll be helpful to Laura to kind of exchange and enlighten some of our other partnering cities in this to let them know what's coming out of our law school here at Drake University. So, we look forward to your presentations, and Jonathan, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, again for being flexible and letting us come here today. So, what you hear today are three reports that were drafted as part of the Course Sustainability in the Law at Drake University Law School. The course is a unique course in the sense that there are only a handful of law schools in the country that are teaching sustainability in the law. However, there's only really one, our course here, that I know about that's doing it in conjunction with a real partner, a real player in the region, the Greater Des Moines Partnership, and addressing real concrete issues in the region and the community. And our task, as part of the class, was to review three regional reports: Capital Crossroads, the Tomorrow Plan, and DART 2035. Take a look at those three reports and find if there is a thread between them that links sustainability together. Through that analysis, we identified three areas: water management, energy efficiency, and transit mixed-use development. What we did then is we broke up the class into three groups, and each group was responsible for reviewing the legal structure, the current laws that are in place in Des Moines and in the region on these particular issues, and then trying to find areas where the law can be changed to enhance sustainability. So, what you hear is a 15-minute report on each of these sections: water management, energy efficiency, and transit mixed-use development, which analyzes the current law and then makes proposals to change the law to enhance sustainability. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Water Management, which is going to be our first group today, and Katie Bries, who's going to kick us off. Thank you again.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Katie Bries, and along with Eric Schultz and Krista Leilisher, we examined water management in Des Moines. And we ultimately developed two main goals. The first was to reduce the volume of water runoff, and the second was to increase the quality of water that is still running off. And specifically, our challenge was how to accomplish these goals in the context of parking lots. We chose this problem because the regional reports really do urge sustainable stormwater management, hydrology, and flood prevention. Water management is very important to Des Moines. We're situated at the confluence of the Des Moines River and Raccoon River watersheds. We have, in the past few years, experienced more frequent and more severe flooding, and climate change studies show that this is likely to continue. Additionally, it's very expensive to deal with this flooding and the other water management issues that we face, and it's harmful to both the economy and the environment. Sustainable parking lots can help to address these issues, and the 2011 Des Moines Residents' Survey shows that these issues matter to Des Moines residents. They unanimously said that water quality improvements and the protection of natural waterways are very important to them. Furthermore, they aren't satisfied with the current efforts to protect natural waterways. In terms of sustainability, parking lots have a surprising effect. We utilized the Triple Bottom Line definition of sustainability, which examines the environmental, social, and economic impacts of a practice. Economically, it's expensive to treat water, and so it's important to manage runoff and to prevent that avoidable pollution of natural waterways that will ultimately be used for our drinking water. And it's expensive to build a parking lot as well. When a parking lot is built, it's often seen as free because we get to park in it and use it for free, but the cost of building that parking lot is passed on to consumers in slightly higher prices for goods and services. Additionally, when you're treating runoff and drinking water, there's public health concerns and costs. For the environment, there's a lot of issues that come up. The more pervious surfaces that an area has, the more runoff that there will be, and impervious surfaces in Des Moines are increasing significantly, and that's expected to continue. Traditional parking lots are actually designed to encourage runoff. This slide gives you an example of the types of pollutants that can be found on parking lots and then end up contaminating our natural waterways or going into our stormwater systems. And in light of the problem and the extent of it, Krista will now tell you a little bit about what Des Moines is currently doing in the existing legal structure for parking lots.
Okay, so after looking at the challenges associated with the stormwater runoff problem, our group next examined the existing legal structure of Des Moines to see how that was impacting stormwater management and parking lots. Due to time constraints, we're just going to focus on those provisions that are most relevant, but we'd be willing to address any questions you have at the end. And we found that there's two primary provisions that are most relevant to our proposal. First, the Off-Street Parking and Loading Ordinance, and second, the Stormwater Management Utility Ordinance. The first ordinance, the Off-Street Parking and Loading Ordinance, has three primary provisions within it that are really relevant to our proposal. First, we were very interested in how stormwater was currently being addressed in the code. And we found that the Off-Street Parking and Loading Ordinance only has one sentence relating to stormwater management in parking lots. And this requires that parking lots be so surfaced and drained, graded, as to prevent surface water accumulation, so simply preventing accumulation of water on the parking lot. Next, we looked at the surface that is required for parking lots in Des Moines, and currently parking lots in Des Moines are required to have asphaltic or Portland binder cement pavement, but they do allow for other surfaces if they are approved by the city engineer. And then the final provision within this Off-Street Parking and Loading Ordinance that we were interested in looking at was the prohibition on shared parking that is currently in the code, aside from the NPC District, which we'll discuss a little bit later. And just to explain shared parking for... just to kind of as an aside, shared parking is an agreement between two or more entities who have different peak parking demand times to share parking spaces in order to meet their parking needs. The next ordinance we looked at was the Stormwater Management Utility Ordinance. And this ordinance is relevant to our proposal in that it shows that Des Moines is aware of the problems associated with stormwater runoff and is willing to make... take steps to address this problem. The remaining provisions are kind of scattered throughout the code in the various zoning districts and the modified parking requirements found within those districts. One example of this is the NPC District. And the NPC District has a number of interesting modified parking requirements. The NPC District, which is the Neighborhood Pedestrian Commercial District, allows for shared parking, which is not allowed in the other districts. In addition, they also have a minimum required parking of 60% of that found in the Off-Street Parking and Loading Ordinance that I discussed earlier. And they also have a maximum parking of what is set out in the Off-Street Parking and Loading Ordinance. So, what this is, is kind of like a maximum lot size, and this is not found in the other provisions of the parking code. So, after examining the existing code, we next look at the impact that this is having on sustainability and stormwater management in parking lots in Des Moines. And we found that while there are some positive aspects of the current code, such as that shared parking in the NPC District, the overall impact of the code is largely negative. And the code has two negative, primary negative effects. The first is that it encourages large parking lots. The second is that it does not adequately address stormwater management. And the code encourages large parking lots by failing to provide maximum lot size and prohibiting shared parking in the majority of districts. Now, the code adequately... pardon me, fails to adequately address stormwater management in parking lots by failing to encourage onsite absorption of stormwater rather than simply getting the stormwater off of the site. Our group is proposing to change the existing law in order to address some of these negative impacts, and Eric is going to discuss some of the innovative practices that other cities have developed to address these problems.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We decided that doing a comparative analysis would be a good way to see what other cities around the country are doing to address the challenge of stormwater management in parking lots. We picked three different cities with very different types of demographics. We feel these cities provide a pretty good survey of what other communities are doing to address this challenge. We asked ourselves a couple different questions. First of all, what are these cities doing, and what sustainable options come out from analyzing what the cities are doing? The first city that we looked at is Kansas City. It's a city that Des Moines has already taken some initiatives from, most recently with the DART Bus Rapid Transit Route, explored some of the policies that Kansas City's put in place. Kansas City, in order to address stormwater management, has taken a couple of different approaches. First of all, as Krista mentioned, with shared parking, Kansas City has expanded shared parking throughout their community in a way that minimizes the impact of unused or off-hour parking lots. And secondly, they've taken lot size reduction initiatives, or programs with sustainable offsets. So, if they're going to have larger-sized lots, then there are some sustainable offsets in place that reduce the impacts that Katie was talking about. These options that they provide to offset some of the negatives that come with larger parking lots do provide businesses with the ability to choose what sustainable initiatives will be best suited for their own business practices and their own restraints as far as parking lots are concerned. The next city we looked at was San Francisco. San Francisco's a city recognized as being on the cutting edge of sustainable initiatives. San Francisco primarily has two different ways they've combated the issue of stormwater management in parking lots. First, through landscape design. They have a street tree program along with an accompanying waiver program that increases greenery in the city. At the same time, this program also seeks to increase the cover over impervious surface by having the stormwater fall onto the greenery, fall onto the trees. That helps reduce the amount of water that falls and pools directly onto the surface of lots itself, also helps with infiltration. Also has the side effect of beautifying the city, which is something positive. And secondly, San Francisco has a pervious surface requirement, so 20% minimum pervious surfaces in San Francisco parking lots. This is a technological approach, changing the actual materials that parking lots are made out of. The last city we looked at was Navisah, North Carolina. It's a small town, but they do have very big sustainability goals. They also have the pervious surface requirement that's akin to San Francisco. They've also implemented maximum lot sizes. This flips the traditional design of parking lots kind of on its head. Normally, you think of parking lots as being designed with a minimum amount of lot size in order to cover the business needs. The code requires... the code can require different types of parking lots to be a certain size based upon the business entity that the parking lot's meant for. Navisah has decided instead to impose a maximum lot size, thereby setting a barrier by which there can be no... thereby setting a barrier where they limit the unsustainable impact that larger lot sizes can have. And finally, Navisah also implements several of the EPA-recommended best management practices for parking lots. So, these three cities are fairly comprehensive and representative of what other cities are doing. So, the comparative analysis gave us a menu of options of what we could do here in Des Moines. So, we decided that in order to look at what in the code we would change, we had to come up with some ways to evaluate these practices. We decided on three primary things. First of all, build upon what's already being done here in Des Moines. We recognize that the city has taken great initiatives, start as far as enhancing the sustainability of Des Moines. It's evidenced through things like the Des Moines Sustainability Report. It's also evidenced in things like the South Side Lot Library Reduction, reducing the lot size, something that we've talked about as well, and also redevelopment projects around the city. We also wanted to promote complementary practices in the code itself, so we don't want to put things in that are going to be exceptions or things that are going to be surprises, so keep people going to the same parts of the code that they are before. And finally, and most importantly, squarely address the challenge of stormwater management by creating more sustainable parking lots. So, to give you the context of our proposal here, we're looking to amend and update the Des Moines Off-Street Parking and Loading Ordinance. This is our targeted ordinance update. And just to give you the idea of why we chose this part of the code, first of all, the ability to find low-hanging fruit. We looked for practices that would be low-cost, high-impact, and hopefully easily implementable. Secondly, we chose this for familiarity. This is a section of the code that's already turned to in order to figure out what kind of a parking lot can I build in Des Moines. And finally, need. The section of the code is where we think we can do the most good, where we think that improved sustainable practices will have the greatest impact, address the challenge, and bring us closer to the overarching policy goals of creating a more sustainable Des Moines. For the actual nuts and bolts of what we're going to propose, I'm going to turn it back to my colleague, Katie. Thank you.
So, in light of these issues and the best management practices that we examined in other cities, we're proposing two amendments to the ordinance. First is the Sustainable Parking Lot Size Ordinance. And what this does is it provides developers with a menu of sustainable options from which they can choose to implement. And then we tied the number of practices that they have to implement to the size of the parking lot in relationship to the minimum that Des Moines already has set in that ordinance. Ultimately, a larger lot is going to require more of these practices, and that will help to offset their unsustainable impact. Among the different options that the developers can use are shared parking, pervious surfaces, which include not just the pervious pavers... there's a picture provided on the slide, but also landscaped areas. The pervious pavers and landscaping areas allow water to naturally infiltrate into the ground instead of running off the lot. This can really help to not only reduce the runoff volume but increase the runoff quality by naturally filtering the water. The soil has the capabilities to do that once it's there. And pervious pavement, as an example, has been shown to help degrade and break down up to 99.9% of oil that has been spilled onto a surface. Additionally, these pervious pavers, although a fairly new technology, have been shown to be durable, they can work in a freeze-thaw environment. But we do recognize that the soil in Des Moines, not every parking lot can support a pervious pavement. Not every person is in a situation where they can implement a shared parking plan. That's why we provide several options for developers, and we also provide them to come up with their own alternatives, which they can present to the city, and the city can either say, "Yes, that is acceptable," or "No, try again." The second ordinance that we are proposing is the Shared Parking Initiative Ordinance. This will amend the code to explicitly allow for shared parking even for parking lot sizes that don't have to implement these best management practices. This will help to save developers' money. It can help to significantly reduce the amount of land that we're devoting to parking lots, and the ordinance provides a way for the developers to do this. It requires the parties to come to an agreement to share a parking lot and demonstrate that they don't have a conflict with their peak demand times. If Des Moines were to implement these ordinances or something similar, we can meet our two goals that we discussed in the beginning of the presentation: reducing runoff volume and increasing the quality of water running off. And ultimately, these ordinances will help to make Des Moines a more sustainable community. We thank you for your time, and welcome any questions or comments that you might have.
Thank you very much. Let's open it up and see if anybody has any comments. Start over here, Skip. These guys worry that I don't look to the left enough, so we'll start over there.
I appreciate all the work you've put into this, but when it comes to me, you're preaching to the choir. I've been pushing for green parking lots. A lot of the developers that have appeared here, I hand them a pamphlet, or actually hand out 40-some pages called Green Parking Lots, and I encourage them to do it. But I appreciate that you might explain so everybody here understands what a French drain is in your drawing here, because I don't know if everybody would understand that. But thank you for your time and energy on this.
Bob?
Well, it's good to see that you're working in this direction. Frank and I started working on the back of the room last year. There's a presentation that had on impervious parking areas, and we continue to pursue that, and I'm glad that other people are taking this up, so thank you for your efforts.
Christine?
I'll just echo a big thank you for this, and I would be anxious to get responses back from our staff based upon your recommendations. So, I'm assuming that we're going to refer these back to the appropriate departments to get their thoughts and have it go through the plan and zoning process, the RNO committee, which would be great.
Is the manager or attorney, any thoughts about the legality of any of these things? Any problems with the...
Well, I... Thank you, Mayor. I had the good fortune of actually meeting with the class for an hour this spring to talk about ordinance drafting. We didn't really get into the substance of sustainability. I did advise them that one of the things that would be really helpful in this current time of strained resources, that anything and everything that they could do that would maximize efficiency and minimize costs to the city would be more likely to be viewed favorably by council, not out of any type of policy concern, but simply out of the reality of resources. And so, I'm very excited to review the finished product, and it sounds like they've really paid attention to costs and to the realities and likelihoods of developers being able to meet some of these goals and objectives.
Did you have any goals as you guys were thinking about this on what the appropriate amount of containment slash controlled release slash introduction back into the substructure of moisture? And looking at all these different alternatives that you have here on this last piece that we have on the screens in front of us, was there any thought or anybody spending time on trying to figure out, in knowing that cost is an issue, given certain circumstances, how do you evaluate it? Mr. Clark and I spent some time in our sister city in France where they had a very interesting... remember Rick, that display that they had? And you'd start plugging in certain options to cure a problem, and it would calculate not only success but costs. And so, pretty soon, you had a bottom line to cure all the problems that was, from time to time, fairly significant. But nevertheless, did you guys ever get into that, what actual costs were, or just acknowledge that they were there?
We did not consider how long water should be contained on a site before it runs off. It's 24 hours for... if a development is larger than one acre, they have to come up with a stormwater management plan, and I believe that requires them to get stormwater off the property within 24 hours without creating significant runoff issues. Our main goal was to be able to let it absorb as opposed to capture and then release. In terms of costs, most of them are very low-cost options. The biggest cost would probably be the pervious pavement, which, depending on where you get it from and where you're installing it, can cost 7% to 15% more than a traditional pavement. But if you use enough of these sustainable initiatives, then you can contain your stormwater and address your stormwater without having to build, for example, a retention pool, which are fairly common sites next to large parking lots. So, it's difficult to say what the exact cost of it is, given that you can save money with this in the long run. With pervious pavement, there's also a cost associated with upkeep. You have to, like, power hose it a couple of times a year to make sure that it doesn't get clogged, otherwise it can't operate properly. But it's not as expensive as a lot of people think. And in terms of the other options that we provide, for example, shared parking, that can save a lot of money, because if you're sharing one parking lot, you only have one parking lot to build, to maintain, to pay for the land that is being used for that.
And I think that the... one of the ideas that we had was that we understand that with the diversity that exists in Des Moines' built environment, in terms of parking lots, or small, some are larger, we wanted to be able to say that developers could choose from a different menu of options that would provide them with sustainable initiatives that best fit their site, because a lot of the costs are more site-specific, depending upon the size of the lot, depending upon where you are in the city.
Just... I know that we had Parks is done in here. Remember when we were up there on north of Beavardale there, well, west of Beavardale, north of Drake, in Whitmer Park? Is that what's there? What's the park?
Stormwater changes.
Yeah, and the neighbors decided they would take this on themselves, because we had a park that was kind of draining into some of their backyards, and in part went into a lagoon in another portion of the park. But they created rain gardens and bioswells and all kinds of stuff, and we're trying to get the water back in the ground. One of our chief problems that we have, not only here but with the EPA and everybody else, is trying to figure out what do we do with this water? How do we improve water quality? How do we slow the runoff? And how do we do it in an acceptable way? And should we put this as a shared burden, or do we just stick it in a concrete pipe and get it to the... and get it to stream as quickly as possible and say we're good enough, we're done with it? And I think that one of the things that we've seen over time in the city of Des Moines is that the people upstream from us are doing more of the latter. And certainly, I think that the ones downstream from us would like us to do more of the number of options that you folks have suggested here. And I think the old adage of, let's not do to those below us what we don't want those above us to do. And so the more ideas that you have, and making sure with your expertise and studying with your instructors, how we do this in a legal way and get everybody to think about it and share the burden. I will also say that we had a development up in the Beavertale area where we talked about all kinds of stuff at the plan and zoning level at one point or another, and then it finally came to the city council, and lots of citizens liked the idea of bioswells. Let's collect the water and we'll get it back into the ground in a certain way. Problem was that, as a first demonstration of it, nobody wanted it in their neighborhood. They just wanted to see how it was going to work out, but do it someplace else. And so ultimately, we had to come up with a conventional solution to the problem, which sometimes exacerbates not only runoff, but erosion and everything else. So, great presentation. Appreciate your input. Any thoughts from staff? Any questions for our professionals here? I think the city manager may have one or two.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you. It's really very well done. I'm particularly impressed that law students have taken up the challenge of disciplines that typically come out of things like civil engineering or planning. So congratulations to you, and your presentation is very good. One just sort of commentary for you to think about, and I'm sure this has occurred to you, but Des Moines, like so many cities our size in this country, is predominantly developed. And so our challenge is, with a city that is, that already has parking lots and it's really hard to go back, is how do you make these things happen, other than just looking at the incremental new development? So it's sort of easy to think about new development that happens and coming up with different regulations that might encourage these practices. But our challenge is, how do you deal with existing properties? So you get into, there are actually some legal questions about that. We were talking earlier today about amortization procedures, and there's apparently challenges in law about the extent to which we can require changes through zoning amortization procedures, and it's difficult and challenging. But you might think about that from our standpoint. If you want to really make impact on the community and accomplish these goals, it's, for our city, it's largely a matter of how do you go back into an already-built environment and achieve these changes? So it's just a thing to think about and to particularly look at some of the legal challenges that arise out of that. But really, very, very well done, and your presentation was good. And I appreciate the thought that you've given this and the clearly professional approach you've used in presenting your ideas, so very well done.
Anybody in the audience want to question our presenters here? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. (applause)
Next group is Energy Efficiency.
Good afternoon, Mayor, County Council members. I'm Sheila Canoplo O'Doley with my colleagues Chris Scott and Erica Shannon Stevie, and we thank you for giving us time to present our proposal on how the city of Des Moines can take a few simple steps to increase energy efficiency in the city's residential and commercial housing stock and work to attain local sustainability goals. I'm going to discuss why sustainability and energy efficiency are important, as well as the link between carbon production and household energy use. Chris will then discuss the current state of the law, followed with the state of the city's housing stock. And then Erica will discuss some examples of strategies used around the country for energy efficiency, as well as some, as well as proposed code changes. So, as you all know, in 2006, the city of Des Moines voted to become a sustainable green community. And we are taking that definition of sustainability of meeting the needs of the present without compromising future generations' needs to meet their own, future generations' ability to meet their own needs. Now, one of the key concepts of sustainability has to do with the idea of limits, and that self-imposed limits are necessary to protect the environment's ability to meet present and future needs. The consequences of weather-related events are costly to homeowners, businesses, agriculture, and local government, and we are experiencing them currently. This graph shows the economic cost to Iowa from the floods and tornadoes of 2008, which was a total of $3.5 billion statewide. Another event that happened in 2007, when there was early warm weather, as we had this spring, followed by a late frost, there was a total of $2.2 billion in agricultural losses nationally. As the climate continues to change, we're likely to experience more of these types of losses more frequently. Over the past 35 years, Iowa's atmospheric moisture has risen 13%, and this fuels convective thunderstorms, which produce more severe weather and precipitation. Recently, MIT and Princeton published a study saying that the 100-year flood will be occurring every four to 25 years, and the 500-year flood will be occurring every 25 to 250 years. And this is important because we have a lot of folks living in the floodplain. We are here at Des Moines at the crux of two watersheds, and so we feel it's important to not be continually adding to the problem and to reduce our impact through energy efficiency. And that's where our proposal initiates some of the first steps. Carbon impacts and household energy usage. In Iowa, in 2010, we produced 119.56 million metric tons of CO2 equivalents. That is equal to approximately 21.3 million cars, 252.2 million barrels of foreign oil, or 25.7 coal-fired power plants. And in Iowa, we have 35 coal-fired power plants, so it'd be a major proportion of our power plants. It also is equivalent to the sequestration of 2.8 billion tree seedlings grown for 10 years. In Iowa, the household and commercial energy usage accounts for approximately 34% to 42% of statewide carbon emissions. And cutting emissions by 10% would be the equivalent of taking 2.3 million cars off the road, or a reduction of 25.2 million barrels of foreign oil. So by reducing energy usage through efficiency gains, we reduce our carbon emissions as well as dependence on foreign oil. Des Moines is very lucky, because we have the opportunity to take a few simple steps that will, to do something about these things and to increase the city's overall efficiency. But before we get to that, my colleague Chris is going to discuss the current state of the law in this area, and then the challenge presented by Des Moines' older housing stocks. Chris?
Thanks, Sheila. Council members, my name is Chris Scott, and discussing the law, the law in Des Moines is relatively thin when it comes to energy conservation or energy usage issues. Section 26 verse 300 of the city code says that the city's going to implement the International Energy Conservation Code for new buildings and anything that's a major remodel. However, that gives a severe limitation on what's going to happen. What the IECC does is it creates an envelope inside the house, where it's designed to do that. That envelope's a barrier from the outside to the inside, so in the wintertime, hot air stays in, cold air stays out, and the reverse in the summertime. We do this through wall insulation, energy-efficient windows, water heating efficiency. What the law doesn't do, however, is it doesn't cover existing buildings. The little stat on the bottom, 93% of all residential housing is not built to the IECC code in Des Moines, creating issues there with energy efficiency in these homes. The current housing stock, this stat here, or this bar graph here is for the region, where nearly 20% of the homes were built prior to 1940. In Des Moines itself, over a third of the houses were built prior to 1945. So to put that in terms, one-third of the houses were built prior to Harry Truman being When you think of that, these older homes aren't designed with that envelope in mind. They don't have things such as insulation or efficient windows, things to keep the cold air out and the warm air in in the wintertime. What this does is it creates an issue with social equity. The comforts of home are harder for people to obtain. It's harder to stay warm in the wintertime, it's harder to stay cool in the summertime. Reflects economically on these folks, where they're spending more for energy and less on the needs that they otherwise would have, such as food and other housing costs. Environmentally, we, you saw previously some of the effects that happen there because of carbon output. We know that approximately 14% or 1 in 7 people in Des Moines live below the poverty level. Their average energy cost is $2,066 a year. On average, that's 13% of a low-income family's take-home pay. Nationally, it should be, it's recommended it should be 6%. Energy, people that help, such as LIHE, only give on average $390. That's about maybe four to six weeks of energy usage in the wintertime, when it, clearly they need more help than that. And so correcting or fixing this problem would help ease the burdens in some of these areas. What the law should do is we want it to reduce carbon emissions, we want to document efficiency, we want education and support amongst city people inside the city. It creates long-term efficiency gains, not just a short-term solution, and addresses regional sustainability goals. And I will turn the time over to Erica now.
We also looked at several cities across the nation to see what they were doing in this area. Austin, Texas, for example, requires energy audits of all buildings. For their residential homes, it's at point of sale, and for their commercial buildings and multifamily residential buildings, such as apartments, it's every 10 years. There are exemptions for financial needs and recent energy efficiency updates for those homes. And the Austin ordinance also allows for criminal penalties for violation of not having an energy audit done. Now, this ordinance, when it first adopted, was very controversial in Austin, especially if the realtors who said an energy audit cost of $500 for, on average, was too expensive when you're selling a home, especially in the economy we have currently. So Austin has backed off of their criminal penalties, and the realtors have been more open to the energy audits in Austin. We also looked at Ann Arbor, Michigan. In 1984, they adopted an ordinance which requires all landlords who require their lesses to pay utilities for the building to show an average utility bill to the renter before they sign a contract for the lease. Stockton, California, looked at a voluntary program, because they were concerned mandates wouldn't be taken well by realtors and citizens. They have a goal by the end of 2013 to have 8,500 energy audits and home retrofits done, which is about 4.5% of their population. And if the goal is not met, then they're going to begin mandating energy audits in 2014. New York has just implemented an ordinance, which they started reporting last year, which requires commercial buildings, city-owned buildings, and large multifamily buildings to report their annual energy usage to the city, and then have an audit done every 10 years. After the audit, they are required to make some of the upgrades, which were recommended by the audit. The city then compiles the data and makes it publicly online, and compiles star ratings and other information, so people compare similarly situated buildings and see if the buildings have made any improvements in the last 10 years. So we're proposing an ordinance that has three steps. First, it would require energy audits for residential buildings. It would require compilation and benchmarking of the data and disclosure of the audits to the public and also to potential renters and home buyers. Next steps we would also have, encourage cities to look at would be expanding the audits to commercial buildings, increasing incentives and educating the public, and having mandatory upgrades for least efficient buildings, such as buildings that are over 150% of the average use for a similarly situated building. Now, we do understand that, before we get started, we should explain, we would be looking at a Mid-American-type audit, and we do understand this is not the most complete or comprehensive audit for getting the best information to home buyers or renters. However, having the city's budget and also the budgets of citizens of the central Iowa region in mind, we think at least, an audit is a better step than nothing. If Mid-American and other power companies were to stop providing free audits, we would encourage the city to look at a more comprehensive audit like Austin uses. For privately-owned residences, the audit would be required at time of sale or major renovation, and major renovation we define as 40% of the interior structure, the building envelope, not including things such as decks, other outside structures. There would be exceptions, again, for the energy audit, such as financial hardship and recent energy audits or efficiency updates to the home. Information would then be shared with the potential buyer, with the option to rescind the contract. For residential rental buildings, multifamily apartments, duplexes and such, the audit would be required the first time that the owner has their rental certificate renewed after the passage of the ordinance, and then every 10 years. Also, at time of major renovation of the rental building. And then the most recent audit, and a sample monthly utility bill would be shown to the prospective renter, again, with an option to not sign the contract. Monitoring, we want it to be something that is useful to the public, but once again, we don't want to put a hard burden on the city or financial strain on the city. So the information would be compiled in a way that the public could search it, could target specific neighborhoods, and could use the information. However, it wouldn't be a requirement for the city to do all the compilation, they would only, we're looking at a searchable database online. In our ordinance, there's also permission for the city to penalize if they want to for not doing an audit, although it wouldn't be required. And then also permission for follow-up materials to be sent to all owners after an audit showing things such as the cost of return on investment for energy upgrades, and also surveying to see which buildings actually have had upgrades done. Goals from our ordinance would be to increase the energy audits and get a baseline of information on the energy efficiency of Des Moines' residential homes, to bring awareness to owners about upgrade options and return on investment from making these upgrade options, to decrease long-term energy use, and increase property values and market competition for the residential buildings. And Sheila was going to touch a little bit more on some of the parts of our ordinance and goals.
I'm just going to wrap up with what we hope to accomplish with this. Why energy audits? Because it's an easy first step that can be done today. By using the Mid-American audits, we can, we don't, the city doesn't have to do anything, there's no cost to you. As Erica explained, they may not be the most comprehensive ones, but we believe it's important to get started with something, and hopefully refine the process over time. Audits also allow us to create the baseline energy consumption information. It identifies specific improvements that can be made, thereby lowering utility bills for citizens and increasing the comfort of the residential housing stock. It also allows for strategic targeted implementation. As we can, as we get the information and start to compile it, we can target specific neighborhoods that maybe have a higher proportion of old buildings or low-income users, that kind of thing, and we can specifically target improvements so that we can get the most bang for our buck. The benchmarking allows us to capture accurate consumption model. It allows us to measure reduction of usage over time, and, you know, if things are not going as expected, it allows, it gives us some information that we can use to change and tweak the plan as we go along. It allows comparison of similar buildings and making the possibility of identifying energy drains. It also helps owners assess the particular efficiency level of their own properties, and they can then use this knowledge to lower their operating costs. The disclosure policies, as Erica was saying, it allows us to rank the buildings of similar size and provides a realistic picture of the cost of living for a particular building, or the cost of operating a particular building. It creates competition in the real estate market. As more buildings become more efficient, there will be increased demand by consumers for more efficient homes, as well as increasing the property values of those homes that are more energy efficient. And then it, finally, it creates informed decision-making. So buyers and lenders who have access to efficiency information can review that to make a more informed decision about whether they actually want to purchase that property, and tenants and occupants with the... And tenants and occupants with the copy of the utility bills, they have more information to decide if that's a place they want to live or if they can afford to live there. Some of the goals, the sustainability goals that we're trying to address, in the Tomorrow Plan, which I'm sure you're all familiar of, we looked at the Sustainability Survey, and our proposal falls into the resource flows on the energy use part of it. And we wanted to highlight this particular response where almost 60% of urban areas responding are not doing energy audits or any kind of retrofits. And we see this as an area where there's a lot of opportunity to make some pretty good gains, including Des Moines, since we're not doing it either. Capital Crossroads, as you know, is a marketing and economic focus, and they focus on the three thematic areas of sustainability, opportunity, and talent. Our proposal addresses sustainability by working towards lowering carbon output. It addresses opportunity by spurring competition in the real estate market and furthering growth in a burgeoning green economy, as well as increasing educational opportunity as there's increased demand for skilled labor in the retrofitting area and potentially for more inspectors to do efficiency audits. And thus, it promotes good jobs for talented and educated people. And this takes, this makes the metro or Des Moines an attractive place to live, thereby maintaining and growing the tax base. A couple of other guiding principles the proposal addresses are the Des Moines stewardship policy, which discusses minimizing the contribution to fossil fuel dependence and global warming and by promoting energy efficiency programs, as well as falling under the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement, of which Des Moines is a signatory for inventorying, inventorying global warming and making energy efficiency a priority. So with that, we thank you for your time, and if there are any questions, we will take them down.
Just one quick question, because I know we're running over here, but on the cities that you did the analysis of, did you get any information as to additional staff that would have been needed to do the monitoring of the program, to carry out the goals and objectives of the program?
Several of them, of course, implemented the program in a more favorable economic time and were able to hire more staff and have since reduced it, and then henceforth reduced their compilation and database thing they were able to do. Others, Austin has kept, from what you can see online, the similar amount of staff. It's varied. Some of them have much more, such as New York, much more comprehensive disclosures. Some of them, it's, it's the ordinance's disclosure, but nothing really happens.
Thank you.
Before I let everybody else, I might add to your input in the answer Christine's question. There's been 1,050-plus cities that have signed on to that mayor's change, all with varying levels of implementation into the program. However, I think that the idea is to set, as you said earlier, you have to, you have to establish a baseline, you have to know exactly where you are, because where are you comparing to after a while? And, you know, are we making a city more energy efficient in our buildings? For instance, the ones we own, we replaced all these windows in here, and then the question is how much more efficient is it going to be as a result of that at the end? And, you know, without those baselines, it's hard to measure it. And we have to get some level of cooperation from Mid-America to be able to establish all those baselines, not only for our own buildings, but for the city as a whole, as we reach out in the neighborhoods and corporations and through the downtown community alliance and our, the partnership, I think, in our Green Core initiatives and those kinds of things, we're trying to get everybody to be at least more cognizant of what's going on. But after you do that, then you can, it's much easier after the baselines are established to then go back and not, without, without a lot of expense, begin to just keep plugging those numbers in. And as you get the bills and, you know, you see how many miles your fleet's driving and what their efficiency is and all the other things that you might measure to make that happen, including water consumption and everything else. It's pretty easy when you're going to start with a library that is 100 years old and you either build a brand-new one or totally retrofit it like the one across the river over here, that you meet a lead standard, in this case platinum, and you realize that you have to achieve a certain drastic reduction in, in water consumption and runoff and all those other things. But I agree, it, there is some cost upfront, but I don't think it's terribly significant. It just takes everybody in all the departments to come together and acknowledge that that's our goal, that's what we're doing, and add that to your list of things that you do as you buy stuff, operate stuff, and build stuff. Skip or Bob?
I'd just like to point out, and you're probably aware of this, but we are making strides in Des Moines, especially in the business community. We have the largest lead platinum building, not just in North America, but in the world right here in Des Moines with the Wellmark Building, and very proud of that. And, you know, Parks and Recs had the first lead platinum building in the city of Des Moines with the maintenance facility out at Glendale Cemetery, and it looks like our newest remodeled library is going to make lead platinum also. So we, you know, very good work, and we're going to strive to move forward with this.
But we did notice that Des Moines is doing a lot with its own buildings, and that's where we think that can be transferred over to the residential and commercial buildings that are not city-owned. And that's a big chunk that could really make a huge difference, huge impact, especially when you consider that a third of the buildings are, you know, were built before 1945.
Well, and our goal is, in doing that, is to lead by example. Bob?
I think you're on a great direction. You got a big selling job where you got 56% of the people aren't even considering doing this. You have to sell that, you got to let them buy into it and go forward from here. And I'm real happy that our city is trying to be a leader in that. And we did also, I think, in that shelter house over at MLK, that was a lead project too, that one of the first ones, I think, that we worked on in the city. So, yeah, so thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? By the way, on, on some of those statistics, it'd be interesting to expand them out just a little bit when you're talking about flood flows and 250-year protections and all that kind of stuff. The thing that's troubling to us is that those numbers change significantly from time to time, and that's one of the things that the city manager and our staff is dealing with. You know, when you look 15 years ago, the peak flows of the Des Moines River on the measured points, I think, one of the numbers, I think, Rick, that came out was what, 73,000 cubic feet per second was flowing? And we see peak flows now that Jeb, are you still here? Did I see 113 or some number like that? So there are significant increases, so that affects exactly what that, you know, 250-year occurrence is. At that time, with those flows, this is how often it would happen. But now with increased flows, all the numbers just are thrown out, let's start over again, and let's figure out where we are. And at the same time, we hope that you guys will address this as part of it. The water that comes to us so quickly is coming from upstream. So it's rural ag, about 85% of it. And we're, we, as taxpayers, all of us, are spending a lot of time paying for 75% of the tiling that's happening on the rural ag ground up above us, which is decreasing that ability for those grounds to absorb water. So pre-settlement times 85% of that water that fell out of the sky was absorbed on-site. Now we've changed it so drastically in terms of cutting down all the trees and removing all the deep-rooted grasses and farming right up to streams, so now only 15% of the water is absorbed on-site. So everything that's coming from upstream ends up down here, including the other things that are the pollutants, which are, you know, herbicides and pesticides and nitrates and all the rest of that stuff. And in addition to flooding conditions that are exacerbated many times by policies, I think that we got to figure out in terms of policy and law, not only locally, but statewide and nationally, how do we deal with a situation like that that guarantees sustainability not only for cities but for farming? There's another little piece that's the largest thing going over Water Works, and I'll tell you that the largest single thing that they have to take out of the water is soil particulate. And Iowa State's, I think, one of their latest studies said that over the last 40 years, we've eroded 50% of our topsoil. That says something about the future of farming if we keep those practices going. So I hope that you guys will help us in making a good, strong case to do something about it for a myriad of reasons, including maintaining Iowa's agricultural state for future generations. Thank you so much for your presentation. I think it's really educational, and we'd love to take it out to the, to the neighborhoods. I'll also say, by the way, that the neighbors, one of the, the things that when we did town hall meetings on these issues, you'd get a resident who would stand up and say, you know, I believe in what you're talking about here, but my wife just lost her job, and I'm trying to figure out how to make the house payment and how to keep the kids fed and make the insurance payment and keep gas in the car and all this stuff that we're talking about, about these retrofits. How can you make that affordable for me so that my house can, you know, be a little less expensive to operate and I can feel better about my carbon footprint and all that stuff? So I think we have to, you know, with, with everybody, bring together the whole mindset, not only from the legal aspect, but all the product people. How do we adaptively retrofit those structures that, as you say, were pre-1945, that have like zero insulation in them, and we're trying to figure out how to bring them up to a 21st century standard?
Well, yeah, there definitely are a lot of things that need to be taken into consideration, but we have to start somewhere. And I think energy audits are really simple steps that we can take to get the ball rolling and then figure out the rest of this stuff as we go.
Absolutely.
And absolutely, we need to deal with things on a regional level. There's just no way around that. But, you know, Des Moines can take that first step.
We're trying.
Yeah, we know, we like you.
Thank you. Traffic.
And I'll apologize right now, I'm going to have to leave about 25 after, so.
We'll speak really fast.
I'm going to stay till you're done, so don't worry.
Hello, I'm Courtney Chabot-Dreyer, and I'm on the transit team along with my partners, Nate Kapke and Derek Moran, and we're going to talk to you about how Des Moines can enhance its sustainability through transit-oriented development. So just to give you a preview of our discussion today and what you'll miss when you leave today at 25 after, we're going to establish the definition of sustainability that we use for our project, talk about some of the sustainability challenges that the city of Des Moines is facing, and talk about the Des Moines Strategic Visioning Plans that have been referenced already today and some of the challenges that were a common theme through all of those plans. Introduce the goals of our sustainability project, analyze current Iowa and Des Moines zoning laws that either help or hinder our goals, introduce the benefits of transit-oriented development, which is our solution, and then actually talk about the proposed TOD district and zoning ordinance that we're proposing for the city of Des Moines. So I won't spend a whole lot of time on this because we've defined sustainability many different ways, but we use the triple bottom line. And the only thing I'll say about this is we really liked John Elkington's quote about the triple bottom line, that only communities who are considering the social, economic, and environmental factors recognize the full cost of implementing policy changes. So we'll talk about environmental, economic, and social challenges in Des Moines, and while I'll talk about each of those individually, it's important to note that these are intermixed. So for instance, when we have an environmental challenge like flooding, it becomes an economic challenge for the city as well. So these are all intermixed. But I'll start with environmental sustainability challenges and talk about greenhouse gases specifically, because it's easy to measure and because Iowa frankly has a problem with greenhouse gas emissions. The largest source of greenhouse gas emissions nationwide is burning fossil fuels for transportation and for electricity. And in Iowa, transportation is the fourth, fourth-largest contributor to our greenhouse gas emissions at 16%. Energy is 30%, so it's the same, about 50% for, almost 50% for Iowa. But between 2005 and 2010, our greenhouse gas emissions increased by 10.7%, and Iowa has greenhouse gas emissions per capita that are 40% higher than the Midwest as a whole and 60% higher than the national average. That's a huge problem. And whether or not you believe in climate change and global warming, greenhouse gases do affect the environment in some way. We are having more extreme weather conditions and patterns, as has been referenced earlier today. And so anything we can do in terms of policies and programs to limit the amount of greenhouse gas emissions for Iowa would be helpful. One of the challenges that we have frankly is that we're a low-density, low-density population state, and so people have to drive a great distance to get to Walmart or to the grocery store to run their errands, get to the doctor outside of the Des Moines metro area specifically. So economic sustainability challenges, I don't have to spend a whole lot of time on this one because you guys are intimately familiar with the challenges of the Des Moines budget. In the last 10 years, you've had to cut $28 million in budget reductions, you have cut 275 full-time jobs, you have invested $90 million in flood-related infrastructure improvements, which were absolutely needed. And during that time, Des Moines has had significant declines in property tax valuations. Commercial downtown property values have dropped 28%, and the average reduction to residential assessed values is 3.4%. The reason, as you know, that is such a major problem is because 50% of Des Moines' revenue comes from property taxes. So anything we can do to increase property values puts more money in the city coffers for us to spend on, on other things and make this a better community. People who would come into the city of Des Moines might just say, wow, what a beautiful, you know, Midwestern, middle-class, everyone seems to be upper-middle-class. But unfortunately, we have huge social and racial inequity throughout our community. 14% or one in seven households in Des Moines live below the poverty line. Two-thirds of the students in Des Moines public schools receive free or reduced, free, reduced-cost meals. And unfortunately, our household incomes, along with our race, our ethnicity, and education levels define neighborhoods within our city. It's not unique to Des Moines. Every town you go to has that neighborhood, that part of town, and it's really unfortunate. And anything we can do in Des Moines to increase diversity and not relegate a certain class of people or economic status of people to one area is, you know, a benefit to everyone in the community. If you look at the, the map, you're probably familiar with this, but the light tan color right in the middle, which is our urban core, represents those households with the lowest household income. If you overlay the maps that deal with education level and ethnicity and race, those same people that have the lowest household incomes are also generally non-white and have the lowest education levels. We need to do something about that. One thing that we can do to help those folks that have the lower household incomes is to increase their access to public mass transit. The average household in the United States spends 19% of their total income on transportation. Low-income households spend 55% of their household budget on transportation. But when you get them good access to public mass transit, they're only spending 9%, which means they have more money for food, for medical access, for education, and, and other needs that are important to them. All of the challenges that we talked about were addressed in the Strategic Visioning Plans that you're all familiar with, Tomorrow Plan, DART Forward, and Capital Crossroads. And specifically in the Tomorrow Plan, a survey of 24 central Iowa communities, the majority of them expressed a great deal of interest for incentives for increased mixed use, increased alternative transportation, higher densities, incentives for growth tied to public transportation, decreasing parking, increasing affordable housing, and increasing the diversity of housing mixes within neighborhoods. So these are all things that we are addressing with our proposal today. And I will turn it over to my partner Nate Kapke, who will talk about the goals of our sustainability project.
Good evening. The goals of our project are we'd like to expand alternative transportation options in Des Moines. Currently, for many people, auto transit is the primary and almost only choice they have for transportation. We'd also like to increase mixed income in mixed-use neighborhoods. There are some good examples around town, but as we had just discussed, there's There are some good examples around town, but as we had just discussed, there's also problems with segregation. And finally, we'd like to do all of this while providing some sort of incentives for development and redevelopment. There are a number of laws, both in Des Moines and in the state of Iowa, that encourage sustainable development and smart planning. In Iowa, it's Chapter 18b.1, the Smart Planning Principles. In this section of the Iowa code, there are a number of considerations that cities must look at when determining policy, though they're not required to follow these. These considerations include housing choice, transportation choice, and efficient use of resources. Additionally, Des Moines has led the way in sustainability in a number of ways, such as recently passing the Des Moines Tax Abatement Program for commercial and multifamily development. To qualify for the program, you have to implement at least four out of 10 possible sustainable initiatives. This includes parking equal to 10% of your parking lot for bike transportation, having a main entrance to your building located within a quarter-mile transit, and also, one of the options that has an impact on transportation is an increase of 50% in the required landscaping. There are a number of current practices that both have mixed pros and cons on land use and transportation throughout Des Moines. To begin with, there are a number of zoning ordinances throughout the city that contemplate mixed use and at least slightly more intensive development. Currently, the downtown areas, C3 Downtown Commercial, is a very good example of mixed use and higher density. This is really great because it has the population to support mass transit. One of the problems with that district is that it's a natural hub. To support mass transit, you have to have multiple different destinations and corridors with which to transit to, so on its own is not enough to solve the problem. Residential Historic District, it contemplates a lot of mixed use, which is very good for, again, increasing transit and increasing people's walkability of the area. One of the problems with the Residential Historic District, though, is it puts into primary emphasis on pre-existing buildings, which limits density and also limits opportunity to implement mixed use because you have to work inside the pre-existing structures. Planned unit development and its intent says that wants to encourage mixed use and infill development. There are a couple of actual problems with the ordinance itself. The only transportation consideration that the site plan is required to consider is whether the development itself can handle the increased traffic flow. It doesn't require any sort of consideration on the ability for mass transit to service the area. It also has an extended developmental process, which can be problematic for developers because they don't always know what they're getting into or what they'll be required to do. And then it allows for any residential, commercial, or industrial use, but you get a lot of very varied results. You get some shining examples like the Drake West Village, but then there are a number of parking lots and other developments or suburban-style homes, home developments along the edges of Des Moines that also are planned unit developments. Then finally, for districts that consider sustainable mixed-use development, we've got Neighborhood Pedestrian Commercial. It does a very good job of making a pedestrian-friendly environment that's walkable. They've got reduced, and actually no setback requirements, reduced parking requirements, shared parking, and allows for mixed use. There are some problems with the area, though, as far as transportation choice goes. Allows for many auto-centric uses, allows for more intense commercial uses than you might want in a mixed development, and allows for very sparse density. It's essentially a modified C2 commercial district. This has led to a number of problems throughout Des Moines. Historically, there's the overabundance of C2 or highway-oriented commercial makes sense, i.e. we've got Highway 6 and Highway 69 as major transit corridors throughout Des Moines, and there's a lot of highway-oriented development along these corridors. The problems with C2 highway-oriented commercial is that it's designed to service the auto-traveling customer. It's not pedestrian-friendly. There are large yard requirements and parking requirements that make the scale unable to be navigated efficiently through pedestrian use. And then it's not necessarily mass-transportation-friendly because by having it be single-use, you push all of the people who would want to travel along the transit out from the transit corridors and into residential areas. So, it's sort of a self-reinforcing process where to successfully navigate commercial areas, you need a car, and you need a car to successfully navigate the commercial areas. This then leads to an increase in the use of automobiles and a need for off-street parking, which leads to problems such as the Water Management Group has discussed with stormwater runoff. It hides the true cost of automobile use and then it makes, again, commercial districts difficult to get to not by car. Then, in addition to the problems that the automobile use in the zoning code, or the way the zoning code interacts with the automobile use, you also have, as Courtney had discussed, transportation problems even just within, or segregation problems even just within residential districts. If you look at the areas that were the low-income, they're zoned primarily R160, which allows for, on special circumstances, dwellings as small as 4,000, on lots as small as 4,000 square feet, and these are located such as north of Drake and then east of the Capitol, whereas you have R190, which has much larger lot requirements, located in areas such as south of Grand and north of the airport. So, while we're not trying to assault Euclidean zoning entirely, there's no zones that actually really incentivize any sort of mixture of economic or racial groups. So, in summary of this, the transportation choice is not a factor in current zoning and land use policy. All zones outside of downtown effectively have an off-street parking requirement. Even planned unit development as a part of the, even though not explicitly in the parking section of the code, doesn't require off-street parking. Through the development and approval process, effectively has an off-street parking requirement. The current code without changes isn't going to change any sort of the racial and economic segregation. Mixed use isn't currently incentivized in any of the zoning regulations. And then the flexibility in planned unit development in the current process also creates an uncertain environment, which can discourage development. We'd like to propose something that will allow for mixed use more off the rack. And then finally, no zones incentivize any sort of density. Density outside of downtown is merely permissive. So, to solve these problems, or at least to help ameliorate them, we'd like to propose transit-oriented development to mix land use planning and transportation planning together. We think the benefits would reduce automobile use, which would then reduce CO2 emissions and reduce traffic congestion, increase commercial development, increase densities to more efficient use of space, and help at least provide some incentives to fight increased social, racial, and economic diversity. I would like to pass this on then to my comrade Derek Moran.
Hi, my name is Derek Moran, and I'll be actually talking about our proposal. So, we propose a new zoning district for Des Moines, the TOD Transit-Oriented Development District. And this district is characterized by high-density, multi-story, mixed-use, a removal of all parking minimums, with the hopes that in the end, the residents will have expanded transportation options and it will create vibrant urban neighborhoods. Here's a picture you should all recognize, Ingersoll Avenue, something that we all consider to be a very pedestrian-friendly district in Des Moines, and I don't dispute it, but it could be so much more. You see on the picture on the right is a truly pedestrian-friendly district with landscaping, wide sidewalks, clustered buildings, multi-story. On the left, you see Ingersoll still is auto-centric in its use, even with the installation of bike lanes. Now, we are not proposing that we zone an area as TOD and then hope development comes. We want it to be a collaborative process between the city, DART, and developers so that we can pick specific areas in which to create the TOD district. We acknowledge that not every location is going to be helped by mixed use and the high-density. But when the areas are picked, we need the developers to work with neighborhood associations in educating residents, because when many people think increased urban density, they think projects or slums. But in actuality, TOD districts can support the local neighborhood. The other myth that we're trying to dispel is that people think TOD, they think fixed rail or fixed paths, but there are many examples of cities in North America who are using bus TOD, such as Columbus, Minneapolis, Ottawa, Portland, and San Francisco. So, the first goal of the district is to increase urban density. The idea is to build higher, not spread out, to reduce urban sprawl. We do this through prohibiting certain land uses, such as single-family dwellings and duplexes, both of which are low-density uses. And we also increase the density by using a building standard known as floor-area ratio, which is a measurement of the amount of square area taken up by a building on a lot compared to the actual size of the lot. FAR was in the Des Moines Code and is still in the definition section, it's just not used anymore in any of the districts. The diagram on the right shows what FAR is, so if you look at the 1.0 ratio, a building that takes up 100% of a lot can only be one story at 1.0. If it's reduced its slot coverage to 50% as the bottom shows, then it can be two stories. When you decrease the FAR, then a one-story building can only take up half, as much size. So, we want to increase the FAR so that all buildings must be more than one story, and we do this through a bonus density program. This came from Bloomington, Minnesota, who's implemented the program. We've set an FAR minimum of 1.5, so every building in the district has to be over one story. And we've set a maximum, but developers can increase the maximum by including certain public benefits in their development. The ones we've identified are low-income housing, underground parking, elderly housing, childcare facilities, and then green or civic space. So, the idea is that through the density bonus program, we allow developers to build higher to get more economic value out of the development if they include certain public benefits that also benefit the community. Now, there is a parallel.
Comrade, could I ask a quick question?
Yes, yes.
Just to...
We were expecting that after we said, "No parking." It was so out of words.
Yeah, and well, and you were addressed as comrade, so I figured you were...
Yeah, I'm from Russia, as you can tell by my accent.
Well, and you'd understand the Agenda 21, folks, quite clearly. Could you quickly, I missed it, FAR is an acronym for what?
Oh, floor-to-area ratio.
Floor-to-area ratio, okay.
So, instead of measuring...
I got it.
Okay, gotcha. So, the, we acknowledge that increased urban density has a parallel problem, which is parking. So, rather than increase parking minimums or set maximums, we've decided to do the smartest thing and remove all parking requirements. The idea here is that we will let the market decide. The smartest way to make parking is for the developers to collaborate with the future business owners or landlords, and that they will decide what the right amount of parking is, rather than use minimums. Other solutions that can be used are paid parking, shared parking, and parking ramps that are built outside a core district. As you can see from the diagram, there are parking areas that could double as park-and-rides if we eventually get this rapid transit bus system, that then have arterials that lead into the center, the commercial core and transit stop. So, the center is a pedestrian-friendly area, but people can still park on the outside and then walk in. Our second goal is to increase transportation options, not just mass transit, but also walking and biking. So, our obvious, the centerpiece is the mass transit, so we want ideally every location to be within a quarter-mile of a DART stop. But we also tackle the problem by changing land use patterns, so we've prohibited any auto-oriented land use. These include car dealerships, car repair shops, gas stations, or any business that has drive-through. The idea is that less autos will be in the district. And then to increase walking and biking, we found, from Orlando, Florida, a design that if you have a TOD district that has bike paths or walking paths outside the district, then you're required to connect to those to create a circuous, sorry, a continuous path through the district. Other ways to encourage biking is through wide sidewalks, bike racks, and bike lanes. So, here's an example of what we're talking about. On the left, we have isolated development, and this is common throughout C2. We have a building surrounded by a parking lot. This creates an unfriendly environment for pedestrians because to get to, from one building to the next, you have to cross through a massive parking lot that's often empty. On the right, we have clustered development, where you see all the buildings meet in the corner, which make it easy access for pedestrians. Now, the third goal is to create a sense of community. We want these districts to be destinations within the city. We want them to be vibrant urban neighborhoods. So, we do this through design guidelines. So, we've reduced setbacks, we have increased frontage requirements, and we have landscaping requirements, so the pedestrian experience is enhanced. We also use land use prohibitions as well. We've created a category of what we call transient uses that we want to prohibit. These include hotels, shelters, transitional housing. The idea here is that we want residents to be long-term. We don't want the short-term usage that those uses provide. Now, we understand that this actually prohibits certain low-income people, but in our density bonus program, we've used the encouraged low-income housing with the highest increase in the bonus, so we think that more than makes up for the removal of transitional housing and shelters. And then lastly, also in our density bonus program, we've included bonuses for green space and civic areas. Lastly, we need to see if the district is doing what we want, so we've included certain measurements or metrics that we want to measure, and these are all already being measured either by the city or DART, but they're population density, increase in property values, increase in DART ridership, overall increase in development activity, and then socioeconomic diversity within the district. And that concludes our presentation.
Questions? I have a question regarding the assertion that fixed transit routes, light-rail trolleys, are about as successful as rubber-wheeled buses. We, in some of the work that the staff did and the partnership did in traveling to Portland, which was one of the cities that you use as the example, purported to us that the investment of developers and their interest in developing in two-to-four-block areas either side of a bus route or a light-rail trolley route was far greater, and lots more paid-for land around fixed rail than bus routes. The idea being for developers that we don't know for sure that bus is gonna be there. Next year, they could put it three, four, or five blocks over that way and we're off the line.
Right, and so that's why we hope that DART has taken the first initiative in the bus rapid transit system and the building of stations, which we feel will have some permanence, and then we look at...
Or at least look like permanence.
Well, I mean, I guess you could always tear down the stations they're building, but that doesn't seem like it is going to happen, but what we found is that rail-centered TOD is much more urban-dense, more than what we're even looking at, you know, often, you know, eight to more than 10-story developments, whereas we are targeting maybe two-to-four-story developments, which has been seen especially in Columbus, Ohio, and Ottawa, Ontario, as increasing development between routes from suburbs to urban core. So, that's what we'd be looking at targeting, so not a massive development that you might see in a large city with a fixed rail system, but small hub developments that connect a route.
And while we understand that developers might be more hesitant around that, if you're zoning these TOD zones both in conjunction with them and along pre-existing transportation corridors, Highway 6 and Highway 69 probably aren't going to move somewhere else, so we realize it's not going to be a solution everywhere. It's somewhere that you can still plan around, probably, well, long-term, so.
And if neighborhood associations... And if neighborhood associations, the city of Des Moines, DART, get together and find some low-hanging fruit, and we're thinking of the bus rapid transit route 60 that is the Ingersoll University loop as being ideal locations to try this out, but if they all come together and decide this is something they want to do, then DART could make a commitment of, you know, for 10 years, this bus stop won't move, or the station will be here. And that will give the developers a little bit more assurance and incentive to develop there.
Question, again, is you define cities that have that higher density and height of buildings, so you say two-to-four stories or something above that, being kind of equated to higher density. How did you define Portland?
Well, Portland has...
In the areas where they put the rail.
I mean, obviously, Portland has the benefit of having an established rail system for quite some time, but they also have a bus system that has been there longer. So I think, I'm not 100% sure on this, but I think the initial TOD developments were built on the fixed rail system because of what you were talking about, the surety of return on investment. But we had so much success with that that then they were able to expand their bus systems, which connect the outlying areas to the urban core with TOD developments as well. So they had the luxury of piloting the program with fixed rail and then moving on to bus, which we don't have that luxury. But we can extrapolate from other cities that have used bus TOD that it does work in, you know, median-to-high-density areas, not the incredibly high-density areas, but the kind of middle area.
Interesting that I think if we dug up our streets, we'd find rails all over the place.
Sure.
That they removed most of those buses, what is it, about 1950, something they were pretty much on. Any staff or Bob?
Well, I have a pleasure of serving on the DART board, and so I was glad to hear you say that BRT is something that you think is going to improve our transportation. And as we address other areas of our city and in trying to make it more available to our residents and that, I think Elizabeth's doing a great job over there, and I think that it's going to improve our transportation. And as our last report shows, the ridership is up, and so we're gaining, and we've still got more changes for June and later on. So I think that it's going to gain in popularity, and hopefully it'll help our businesses too, so.
Just on the news last night, 6:00 and 10:00 o'clock news, there was a story about changing household. People don't want to live out in the suburbs anymore. Back in World War II, there was a mass exodus out in the suburbs. Everyone went from one to two cars. That's when we probably ripped up all the rail throughout the city. But people, because of the cost of gasoline, the maintenance, and cost of vehicles, are wanting to move closer to where they work, closer to mass transit. And there have been numerous studies on that, and I do think that while we're generally a little bit behind the coasts, that will eventually make it to Des Moines, and people will build those lofts, build those apartments, and really want to live closer to the downtown area and to the amenities, the parks, the civic areas, the concert halls, and all of that.
And I think the value of our land is much more needed than to be used for parking. I think that's the lower value of land for parking spaces.
And higher value than just one story.
All right. It's not just the cost of installing a parking lot, it's the cost that you missed out on what you could have done with that.
Right.
Might have been also somehow influenced by the business plan of a large motorized vehicle manufacturer that bought out most of those trolley lines and put rubber-wheeled vehicles on the road as opposed to steel-wheeled ones. Skip?
Well, some of the figures they gave us were very interesting. Almost 25% of our greenhouse gases are due to ag in Iowa, and yet we have so few people living out in the areas and working in ag. But Iowa as a whole is 40% higher in greenhouse gases per capita than most other states. And this is suggesting to me, it goes back to something you touched on, Mayor, with the drainage of our farm fields, that we have a mindset in this state that we have to change, and it can't be business-as-usual. We're going to have to start looking at, it might cost us a little bit more to do it different, but in the long run, it's going to be cheaper. And how do we educate our people into this type of a mindset?
Anything else? Mr. Manager?
These are legal experts here, want to cross-examine these, these young folks?
No, thank you, Mayor, but I did have the pleasure of visiting with two of the three presenters here last week, and so this is the second time, and they've fleshed it out, put some more details on it, and it's a really exciting prospect for us.
Great job.
And from my chair, I appreciate very, very much your thoughts. I think that it challenges all of us to kind of think in a different way, and hopefully will push us even further to push for a little denser development, especially in the core. And we're finding quite a bit of acceptance to that level of development, especially a lot of young people that like to live, work, and be entertained in a walkable kind of an area. And I think that it happens more in the areas that are populated by buildings that are above that two-to-four-story level, is you get that urban sophisticated, cultural kind of cosmopolitan, if you will, lifestyle.
Sure. And which small business owner doesn't want to have those 20, 30 people living right above them?
Exactly.
Cost of flow.
Or within a block away, you know, on foot.
We even have names of developers who would love to be a part of the pilot.
Give us their names, if you would like.
Larry Finks is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I just want to thank you again for being flexible and listening to an enormous amount of information tonight and for showing an interest in these issues. It's extraordinarily encouraging and also makes me proud to be a resident of the city. In conclusion, I do want to thank the city manager and your staff, who have been incredibly open and willing to meet with the students. In particular, Laura Graham, who's just been outstanding throughout the course, the city attorney, Jeff Lester, you also have been wonderful in meeting with the students and coming to the class, so I thank you for that. And I'd also like to thank our true partner, Meg Fitz, and the Greater Des Moines Partnership, who for two years has been working on this project with me. And then finally, and possibly most of all, the students for their outstanding work and their diligence throughout this process and working towards these very important issues. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give them a hand. Unless anybody has any questions from staff, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much.